Good evening. The Joint Regular Meeting of the Bellflower City Council. The City Council Acting on behalf of the Successor Agency to the Dissolved Bellflower Redevelopment Agency, and the City Council Acting on behalf of the Successor Housing Agency to the Dissolved Bellflower Redevelopment Agency, is called to order on Monday, June 26, 2023, at 5:30 PM for closed session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Santenaz.
Here. All right. Closed session, item number three, Mr. Stewart.
So we have several items, three items specifically. Negotiations, Conference of Labor Negotiator, myself and the unions involved are ASME Local 1511, BCEA Executive Assistance, BCEA Part-Time Community Service Officers, and ASME Local 3745. We have a status report on negotiations. Next is Conference of Real Property Negotiator, the property question is 9835 Flower Street, Bellflower, California. Myself, the negotiator, Christopher Beck, is the agent representing the property owners. And the last item we have is one item of initiation litigation. According to Governor Code 5495456.9D4, one item.
Okay. Does anyone have any conflicts? None, okay. I see no one from the public, so we will now recess to close session. Good evening, everyone. The Joint Meeting of... The Joint Regular Meeting of the Bellflower City Council, the City Council Acting on behalf of the Successor Agency to the Dissolved Bellflower Redevelopment Agency, and the City Council Acting on behalf of the Successor Housing Agency to the Dissolved Bellflower Redevelopment Agency, is called to order on Monday, June 26, 2023, at 7:00 PM back to open session. We are reconvening from the closed session, and there are no reportable action taken during the closed session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Hamada. Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez. Mayor Santenaz.
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by the mayor, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Elizabeth Oba, the Director of Planning and Building Services. Please rise. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life, the gift of community. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for giving us wonderful staff. We thank you for the men and women of our military. We thank you for giving us our first responders, the sheriff, the fire department, the first paramedics. Please keep them safe and their families safe, so that they can continue to keep us safe. We thank you for giving us this wonderful community, its wonderful residents. We thank you for all the, again, the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for giving us this great city that is continuing to improve. As we gather tonight, please keep blessings on those who are sick, those who are hungry, those who are homeless, and those who are jobless. Please give them the comfort that they deserve. As we gather tonight to discuss the business of the city, please give us the wisdom. Please enlighten us and show us the right way, so that we can make the city the best it could be. We ask all this in your mighty name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Oba. Let me start with council announcements. School starts earlier this year, and before you know it, students will be back in class. This summer, the Bellflower Volunteer Center is working with community groups, residents, schools, service clubs, churches, and organizations to provide backpacks and school supplies to our most needed children in Bellflower. You can help by providing a backpack or any new office supplies. Donations will be collected at the Bellflower Volunteer Center through this Wednesday, June 28. Backpacks will be distributed to students the week of July 24. If you would like to be a part of this important program, please contact the Volunteer Center at mhardy@bellflower.org, or call 562-804-1424, extension 2331. This program is for registered families only. Your support is greatly appreciated. Councilmember Dan.
Thank you. The city encourages all property owners to take a more active role in ensuring that their family members and their guests on their property to refrain from using illegal fireworks this Fourth of July season. The city's enforcement strategy permits Bellflower Sheriff and public safety personnel to respond to a complaint at a residential property and refrain from discharging of the illegal fireworks. And if any person lighting them can be identified, the property owner will receive a $2,000 administrative fine. And if you have any questions or concerns about the firework enforcement here in Bellflower, please call the City of Bellflower Sheriff's Substation at 562-925-0124. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join their next monthly mingle, which will take place Tuesday, June 27, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM tomorrow morning. For more information, please call Bellflower Chamber of Commerce, and they can be found at 562-867-1744. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Tonight, we have a very exciting presentation from the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District. I'd like to introduce Ms. Maritza Olmos for the presentation.
Hi, thank you, Mayor.
So the floor is yours.
Thank you. So my name is Maritza Olmos. I am the Operations Manager at Greater LA County Vector Control District for our Silmar office, but I actually live here in Bellflower. Today, I have with us our Acting PIO, Caroline Gangora, which is sitting right here. And we'll be talking to you about mosquitoes, but more specifically mosquitoes in Bellflower. So why should we care about mosquitoes? Well, for one, they're the world's deadliest animal and cause over 700,000 human deaths a year. And this is not taking into account all the people they make very sick, some of which can even become disabled for the rest of their lives. This is done through mosquito-borne diseases such as West Nile virus and dengue fever. And we do have potential for outbreaks in communities, not just here in Bellflower, but in LA County. So at vector control, we follow an integrated vector management approach, meaning we have three equal parts. We have our site tech department, also known as our lab, that handles and monitors mosquito populations as well as virus activity. Our operations department responds to service requests, conducts inspections, source reduction, and treatments as needed. And our communications department does education and outreach. You may have seen them at community events, such as the Summer Street Fest here in Bellflower. They also do elementary education as well. So some of the things that we do with integrated vector management is that we do a lot of inspections and treatments for different sources throughout the community. We treat and inspect rivers, flood control channels, underground storm drains, street gutters, green pools, meaning pools that are not being maintained by their owners. We also conduct property inspections for cryptic sources or sources that are a little bit harder to find. We set mosquito traps to survey for mosquito populations as well as disease, and we do offer mosquito identification as well. Some services that we've provided to the City of Bellflower from 2022 to 2023 is that we've conducted nearly 2,000 residential and public inspections. So these can be inspections for backyards for homeowners, as well as public locations like the parks. We've inspected and treated nearly 440 swimming pools, responded to 39 service requests, and inspected and treated over 2,500 underground storm drains. So we are very active in the community of Bellflower. To give you a little bit of background on the mosquito lifecycle, the female mosquito is actually the only one that bites us. The males do not. That's because they need the protein in our blood in order to lay eggs. They do look for water, but more specifically stagnant water. And depending on the species, they'll either leave individual eggs or egg rafts on the surface of the water. And those eggs will then hatch out into larvae, which molt into pupae, and eventually emerge as an adult. This process does take about five to seven days. So say, for example, you water your garden or leave stagnant water on a Sunday evening. By the time you revisit your backyard the following Saturday, you'll have hundreds of mosquitoes back there. In the area, we do have two different mosquitoes. Our native mosquito is the one on the left, our Culex mosquito. They're more of a dawn dusk biter, and they do prefer to breed in larger bodies of water, like green pools, fountains, and ponds. They don't typically bite humans, but they can here and there, and that's how we can end up with diseases like West Nile virus. And on the right, we have an invasive species. It's the eighties mosquito. It's a lot more aggressive. It's a daytime biter, but it can bite at night as well. And they do prefer to breed in smaller containers, plant trays, miscellaneous containers in the backyard, drains, different things that can accumulate water. They do have the potential to spread different diseases, transmit different diseases like Zika, dengue, chikungunya, yellow fever, and canine heartworm. We haven't had any local transmission of these diseases, but it is possible, especially when travelers come back infected from other parts of the world. What we deal with mostly is West Nile virus, and it is everywhere in LA County. As of 2023, at our district, we've only had one positive sample of mosquitoes come back, and that was in the city of Burbank. For Bellflower, we have not had any this year. But last year, we did have eight samples come back positive for West Nile. So it's very important to dump out stagnant water. We do face many challenges in vector control, one of which is trying to control this eighties mosquito, which is the more aggressive mosquito. They are invasive to the area, but they have rapidly spread throughout California. You can find them in pretty much every city in LA County. And as I mentioned, they do prefer the smaller sources, which makes it harder to find where they're breeding and also to control their population. They lay eggs in the water that can be found anywhere, front yards, backyards, and patios. And we don't always have access to these properties, so it makes it much harder to inspect and get rid of the source. As I mentioned, the eighties mosquitoes are at the moment not transmitting any disease locally, but they have become quite a nuisance, and they do impact quality of life very drastically. A few years ago, we were able to enjoy our backyards with not much thought in regards to mosquitoes. And today, most of us will go back to our backyards and end up getting bitten. There has been an increase in the risk of additional diseases coming to the area because now there is a vector that can transmit those diseases. So what can residents do? For one, they can get rid of any standing water, so no water, no mosquitoes. At least once a week, it's important to dump out any water that you may find, scrub items, turn them over, cover or throw anything away that may hold water, drill holes in anything that may be accumulating water as well, because they can breed in anything as little as a bottle cap. We also have a DIY checklist that residents can download from our website. It is a PDF file they can download, and it does list out all the common places we do find mosquitoes breeding. They can check their own yard if they like. We also offer service requests. So if a resident would like for us to come out to their property, we can do that as well. And anyone can submit a service request. They can either submit it online at glamosquito.org or through over the phone as well. We also ask residents to report any unmaintained swimming pools. We do keep a close eye on swimming pools as much as we can, but every once in a while, we'll have a new one come up that can produce thousands of mosquitoes a week. So if you do know about one, we do urge the public to please report it, just so that we can try to find a solution with the homeowner, whether it be treating the pool temporarily or trying to help them find how to resolve the issue. Most importantly, it's important to wear repellent. So just how sunscreen protects us from the sun, insect repellent protects us from mosquito bites. It's important for the repellent to have one of these active ingredients, either DEET, picardin, IR3535, or oil lemon eucalyptus. If it does have a very low percentage of active ingredient, it might not be effective. Just how sunscreen, if it has a low SPF, it's not too effective either. So keep that in mind. Always read the label before applying onto your skin, especially for children and pregnant women. We do want to thank the City of Bellflower for your continued support and partnership. It's not easy for us to conduct inspections at every single property, but with your support and your being proactive in your neighborhoods, and the residents also being proactive, we can make a big difference in our community. I want to thank you for your time, and I am available for questions.
Thank you, Maritza. That was very informative. I just have a couple of questions for you. One is on the slide presentation. Is that something that you can share with our staff? Maybe we can post that in our website?
Yes, of course.
Okay. So because the more we can inform them, the better off we're going to be. And also, we have a street fest every other Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Are you planning on having a booth there?
I know we had one last year, if I remember.
Was it last year?
Yes. Are we gonna... Do you know if we're gonna have... Yes? We'll have one this year as well.
Okay, okay. Do you know what date? Okay, please. So we can inform our residents also. All right. And then, in your presentation, you touch on, let's say, maintenance of swimming pools, any stagnant standing water. So can you address us and our residents, especially those who are here and also here on television? How can we help you?
Dumping out any stagnant water. A lot of different types of items can collect water. Even a rain barrel that is not sealed properly or the screen is no longer intact can breed hundreds and hundreds of mosquitoes. So doing routine checks of their backyards, their front yards, it's easy to think, oh, I don't have stagnant water. But to physically go out and walk the property, especially after we've had so much rain this year. And if they see anything wiggling in the water, dump it out as best as they can. A lot of folks think that maybe some bleach in there will do the trick, but unfortunately, it doesn't. Ultimately, if they do or would like for us to come out, we're more than happy to. Everything's covered by their property taxes, so there's no charge for our services. And we try to respond within 48 hours.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Any question of Maritza?
Yeah, I just have one.
Please, Councilmember Dutton.
What's the lifespan of a mosquito that vector control doesn't exterminate?
So their actual lifespan does vary on the elements. So say it's extremely hot or extremely cold overnight. If they're not able to find shelter, they'll die off sooner. But for the most part, they'll live about two weeks to 30 days, depending on the situation. So it's always tricky when you get one that finds its way inside your home, and you can't really find it. But it does vary. Some can even go dormant over the winter months. But that's more of our native mosquito. But they do live for quite a long time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Coops?
I have no questions. It was a great demonstration, though. I appreciate you coming and showing this.
Of course, thank you.
And I have one more thing. I don't know if you're ready to talk about this, just for disclosure. I'm also on the board of the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District, and there is the new technology being developed or in the works right now, the sterile insect technique.
Yes.
Are you ready to kind of talk about it?
I know a little bit about it.
Can you share... This is very exciting. If you listen to this, it's very exciting. It's a new thing that will happen very, very soon.
Yes, so our SIT program, we are currently working to get it up and running. It's where you take male mosquitoes, and they are put in through X-rays to make them not be able to have viable eggs when they mate with the female. So they're released out into the public and into a controlled area first. And when they mate with the females, the eggs are not viable, meaning the eggs never emerge, they never hatch. This has shown to be effective, and it brings the mosquito populations down very significantly. A lot of folks misinterpret it because we're releasing more mosquitoes into the area, but male mosquitoes do not bite humans. They feed off of nectar. So it actually won't increase any bites, and it'll reduce the mosquito population.
So basically, the male mosquitoes are being sterilized.
Yes.
So when they mate with a female, there's no offspring.
Correct.
And I think initially, we identified an area.
Yes.
Somewhere, San Fernando Valley.
Yes.
To be the test area, but it hasn't materialized yet.
No, not yet. It takes a lot of funds, a lot of planning to do it, and then the area has to be secluded, so that we make sure that it's actually being effective, and then we'll slowly spread from there.
It's very exciting, because I was able to... I was fortunate enough to go on a tour of the facility in Los Alamos, inside the base where they produce the sterile male mosquitoes. It was being tested, and it seems like it's very, very effective.
Yes, it's shown to be effective in other parts of the world, yes.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Thank you so much for your presentation. And I'd like to give you this commemorative coin for your nice presentation, also for Caroline. All right, next item, public comments. Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium and re-review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the City Council.
Just please sign in and state your name.
Hi, I'm Priscilla Brown. Evening, everyone, mayor, city council members. I do have these. I wanted to give to everybody. I made a copy for Jeff also. So a couple of months ago, I was here to talk about my neighbor's property at 9335 Oak Street. And since then, there's been some progress. I know at that time, Mayor Santenaz said that I could have photos taken over my friends of her property in the backyard, which was done... Sorry, I think that was back in March. Anyway, they did come out and took photos, not from my yard, but I guess she actually gave permission for them to take them of all of her property. So... But just a few things I want to address. So I gave you all pictures there of her property. And I know from the very beginning, it's been treated as a visual nuisance. So we can call this anything we want to, but it's a fire hazard. That's all there is to it. If you look at those photos, that's a definite fire hazard. So the Fourth of July is next weekend, and there's dead weeds up against my fence, my wooden fence that caught fire before. And, you know, I know there's not much concern that my house almost caught on fire, but, you know, it's being treated as she's elderly and frail, and it's just... Yeah. So anyway, but she can go to Home Depot and get herself in and out of a truck and drive it home. And so I don't understand. But anyway, so I guess as of last week, she got electricity. Before that, she had an extension cord from the neighbor's house over her fence, where she was getting electricity from them. And that was okay with the city, that she was doing that. And I was told that, well, you know, Priscilla, there's not as much of a chance of fire because she doesn't have electricity. She had an extension cord from the neighbor's house. Okay, so A, that didn't give me much comfort, because the first fire wasn't from electrical, from her house, anyway. Two, she's got an extension cord coming from the neighbor's house. Nobody knows what she's plugging into that extension cord. Is she attaching other extension cords to that? Her house is hoarder conditions. I mean, I can see out of my window her side window and her, what I assume is her bedroom, three-quarters of the way up the window, there's stuff stacked. But anyway, so this has been going on for eight months now. And so it's just, you know, her hedges are another issue. If you see in there, I've got pictures of the thorns, one-inch thorns on those things that are on the sidewalk. But I've been told, well, you know, other people have rosebushes. So... But I've never seen rosebushes lining some of the sidewalk. But anyway, so I just want to bring this to your attention. I want to make everybody aware of the situation there.
All right.
That it's a fire hazard. So everybody needs to know that.
Okay.
And just hope for the best that there's not another fire. But if there is...
All right, thank you so much.
...it can be a bad situation.
Mr. Stewart, can you have code enforcement look into this, please? Do you have the address?
Yeah, I'll report out to the council and Ms. Brown.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
You know me, I'm still waiting. Just wondering, I'm coming to find out firsthand what my neighbors have assured me over a year ago, Darlene. They just ignore us. I'm sorry, but that's what my neighbors say. And they had tried to get the crosswalk removed and the safety for my disabled neighbors on both ends of the block. You know, one end of the block is Bright Star Assisted Living, and the other end of the block is Rose Via. My neighbor here lives near Rose Via. One of his trees fell down. The tree on the sidewalk fell down. It's not his. It cracked his sidewalk. It's right in front of his pathway. So he and I chat, and we're chatting there today, last week, and who knows when. And guess what? Somebody put tar. So now, the kids have this lovely bicycle stunt ramp, and they're using it. The good thing is they're wearing their safety helmets, because you need a safety helmet over this stunt ramp. It's sad. We live in a handicapped, disabled block where we don't need stunt ramps. We need those in the stunt park. They can go to the park ramp. But while they're having a good old time, it's a safety hazard for the disabled that live on both sides of the block that are using it. I'm still trying to get you guys to pin down a date if we're going to get flashing yellow lights or not. Do we have a date on that? Because my neighbors say, "Don't hold your breath, Darlene, because it may not happen." They told me that a year ago. I can see that that's a problem. But anyway, that's all I've got to say. I'm still waiting. We're still waiting. We're hoping our neighbors will be safe, and we wonder why it didn't happen five years, 15 years ago. A hundred people or more have complained before me, and nothing happened. And I'm going to say the same thing I said at the Public Safety Commission meeting. It's sad that lives were lost, because this issue was ignored for a very, very long time.
All right, thank you. Do we have dates for the flashing light?
We'll respond to the council tomorrow, and we'll respond to Ms. Palacios again, the timing of that problem.
Okay, all right. So you'll get a response. All right, anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Raoul Urtez, I'm Darlene's neighbor. I live at 9206 Rogue Street. As she was mentioning, thank you for taking my comment also, by the way. About a year ago, November, a tree came down, jack around the tree, came down. You guys quickly to respond, and you guys were able to get rid of the tree, because the winds knocked it down. But when the contractor went over there, he obviously, as he was cutting it down, he damaged the sidewalk. The sidewalk was already damaged. It was already lifted. But when the contractor went over there, when he was knocking the tree down, when he was chopping it down, the truck was about this size. So it came down on the sidewalk, messed up the approach, the whole sidewalk. I have sent several emails to the Safety Commission. I have gotten no response. I have called to the Safety Commission, have gotten no response. So as she was mentioning, I have seen, matter of fact, last night, I see somebody tripping over the temporary repair that the city did. They put temporary asphalt on it. They put, uh, temporary asphalt on it, which made it into like a, a foot high ramp, which the kids are using now. They're just using it as a ramp, they're going up and down. And it's like a safety hazard and like, uh, i- i- it's, it's just, uh, unbelievable how this goes on as people are walking there with walkers. They're also walking with wheelchairs. If they go over the side, somebody's going to get hurt real bad. So I was just wondering, uh, is there any timeframe when the city is going to start addressing the sidewalk repair issue?
What, I'm sorry, what, what's the address of that?
9206 Road Street.
Continue, sir. You have three minutes.
Uh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, uh, that was it. I, I always just had that comment. Uh, matter of fact, uh, last night I see somebody almost trip over. Cause at the, at night, you can't see the, the, the repair that they did. Cause they did put temporary asphalt on it. But it's just there and just the whole sidewalk is just damaged. It's like, you know, and like I mentioned before, it's like, I seen people, matter of fact, I wasn't ready, I was just coming to see how the whole meeting went about. I had took some pictures of the people trying to get over that, that ramp. People in the wheelchairs, people in walkers. We got two of those situ- uh, we got the Assistant Living in one side. We got Rose, uh, please call Rosewood on the other side, on, uh, on Lakewood. And people are going over to see their relatives. And it's a shame how they have to go over that ramp and trying to get over that ramp. It's just, you know, it's just a concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So w- w- we must know the area because asphalt was applied.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
So we should know it.
Let's report back, I hate to say this again, but let's report back out tomorrow. We'll get out and look at it, respond to the resident and the council.
So I was waiting for the information. Since we have the asphalt, we know exactly where it is.
I think I know what it is, but we'll find out.
So can we, can we fix it as soon as we can?
Yeah, we'll try, we'll get it, we'll get, we'll get some kind of correction out there to make it safe until we do the.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah.
I haven't been down here in quite a while, but.
Where's your hat?
Well.
Did you get a haircut?
I got in a hurry and fell out of it. But I want to bring a couple of items up. I have got a notice from City of Bellflower for fabulous code enforcement about having holiday lights up, not taking them down. Now it's up to a $200 fine. Last time the city took me to court, it cost them $15,000. And that was over a canopy. Now I had the lights up as security, which not many of you are aware of what I was going through. And it's, I'm not going to tell you. But it was used basically for me taking care of my wife. Because I've had the doctors there in the middle of the night, ambulances and everything else. I don't intend to pay this deal. If you want to take me to court, fine, we're going to court. I'm sick and tired of the nonsense, this code enforcement. And you look across the street, they haven't bothered with the Orange County Sheriff. He's directly across the street. My lights only come on and off when people are coming up there to the house to do something, to help me. Okay, the other part, you got another one across the street from me. He's got brighter lights than anybody all night long. And he, he works for the Bellflower School District. He ain't got no ticket. Something's wrong with his whole program. Now the other thing personally, I supported you people when you wanted the utility tax to raise it. I would not support it today. You call this so-called Sheriff's Department station over here, the wannabe cops. It's nothing but a glorified answering service. Probably a million dollar answering service that's worthless. You ask the Lakewood Sheriff down there, because I've done a couple of police reports, out of the sheriff down there, oh yeah, that place is a joke. This right out of the Sheriff's Department. Yeah, that was, that place is a joke. I don't know why they have it here. So you're throwing away money. But that's the two big things. The other item is homeless. I can give you five homeless people. I supported it because I always couldn't believe women on the street. Well, I can give you three women and two guys that are responsible for probably at least a dozen or better crimes here in Bellflower. I'm filing on them myself. And the Sheriff's Department, I think you need to find a new ba- agency because they don't seem to do nothing. They ride by these homeless, they're running around at night on these bicycles. They used to have a program called Night Rider. Now this is really Night Rider. I'm tired of this three minutes. You're going to wait a minute.
No, thank you so much, sir. Thank you so much, you got your three minutes already, okay?
My three minutes is up.
Yes, sir.
Now this is another constitutional thing against my rights. But nothing's being done with this homeless in this town.
Thank you, sir.
Riding a bicycle with no lights, why aren't we picking them up and pounding the bike? But I'm not putting up with this stuff no longer.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Tony Veltrey. I live off of Alondra and McNabb. And just as I was coming over here, there was another traffic accident right at the corner of McNabb and Alondra because people fly from 605 to Woodruff because there is no traffic control. Constantly between Taco Nazzo and the traffic up and down Alondra all day, all night. Never see an officer given a ticket there, deputy given a ticket there, never, unless there's an accident. I couldn't even get here tonight, had to wait, go around because there was a TC. Uh, you, no one, somebody needs to patrol that. There's a lot of accidents that happen in that short, not even a mile long stretch because there's no stop. They go over the bridge, they're, they come, they don't, they run through that red light at McNabb and then they go right through to, to Woodruff. It's a hazard, it's dangerous. And once they took that stop sign out by the high school years ago, you can't even get out from McNabb onto any of those streets. And this goes on 24/7. It's day and night, two in the morning, five in the afternoon. And down at Somerset and McNabb, you can see all the circles in the streets. It's like, we need more enforcement. There's not enough traffic cops, there's not enough, I don't know what we pay the Sheriff's Department for traffic, but we're not getting our money's worth. So I don't know what we can do about it, but something has to be done. So you guys need to look into what we're paying them, what we get for our money and, uh, see what happens. But it's, uh, there's been a lot of TC, a lot of accidents there in the la- oh, we've had three cars go through our fence in the last five years. And you have property in that area and that fence has been crashed into three times. And we've had to pay, and I believe that fence belongs to the city of Lakewood, the city of Bellflower. So I don't know what's going to happen, but it's, uh, it needs to be fixed, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Stewart, can you contact the Sheriff's Department for some enforcement there? And also for your information, come July 1st, in the new budget, we're adding one patrol car. We're adding one more. All right, anyone else?
Hi, um, so my name is Brian. I've been a resident here for about six years now. And, um, a part of me wanted to start getting involved in the local government a little bit more. Um, now that I've finally finished school, I have more time to attend the city council meetings, no more homework, so I could come here a little bit on the evenings. And, um, I wanted to ask, um, just because I was interested, um, something I was looking at was becoming a member of a planning commission, um, maybe sometime in the next year. I know that there are no vacancies at the moment. Um, but I was just looking at the website, just seeing, um, that, you know, they're appointed by the council members. Um, I just wanted to ask if it was possible to maybe get like, um, some direction or maybe like some criteria of what it would take to be in that position. Um, I definitely want to get more involved in the government or in local, my local government and just, um, kind of help or be a part of that process, which I think would be kind of fun. Um, I live by Bellflower and Cedar where a lot of, um, development is going on. Um, so I haven't been a resident the longest, but it definitely will be exciting just to continue being a resident and seeing what else there is to come in the future. Um, and yeah, that's it. Just if I could have any, like, someone reach out just to see what it would take, if it's even a possibility, um, that would be great, but thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian. My, I, I guess my first suggestion to you is attend a coun- a planning commission meeting and see how the proceedings go. Okay, that's gonna be the first step. All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Matthew Brown, Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
Um, I have noticed over the last several months that one of our city council members has not been here. It's been the same person for quite a few months now. I mean, I hope he's okay, I hope everything is fine with him. But if he continues to miss his city council meetings and I don't know if he's doing his due diligence with the rest of his duties, but if not, what is the criteria of removing this individual and replacing him with somebody who can be here and do their job? And how long does that take? So, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, uh, there being none, we have no public hearings tonight. There are no ordinance or resolutions for consideration. Uh, there are no consideration items, so we're moving to the consent calendar. Does anyone have any conflicts?
No conflicts.
Wow, no conflict tonight?
Yeah.
That's a first.
Pass the board.
Any, uh, any item to be polled, you would like to poll?
No.
Okay, I just want to pull, um, item 14C. This is regarding the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Mr. Milano, how are you doing, sir? Uh, I, I pulled this item because I want to share this with our resident. It is very exciting to me. Uh, it, it is, I think we haven't had this plan study for quite a long time or maybe never?
This will be our first.
Oh, it's our first, okay.
Our first Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We do have the, um, the general plan and there's a open space element in there. And that's been our general guide, but that's well outdated.
Okay, so this is the first time.
Parks and Recreation Master Plan, yes.
Okay, wonderful. So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go direct to my question here. Um, what is the end product of this master plan?
The end product is going to be a, uh, a guide for us, for, for you, for city council, for the Parks and Recreation Department, uh, as far as policy moving forward. And a guide for property acquisition, park development, programming, what needs their, uh, what programming needs, what personnel needs, if, if we do build out properties and purchase properties and expand. It's a general guide of where we are. It, it's what we did with the, um, the needs assessment, the LA County Needs Assessment, how we got our priority projects. It's that put on steroids. It's, it's very specific to Bellflower. It's, there's going to be, the, the process that'll lead to the end product will be many community meetings, um, community engagement, getting their input on what the community wants, what the stakeholders, what our city council wants, uh, moving forward for Parks and Recreation in this department. And, uh, right now, we've been piecemealing for the past decade, lots of new projects together. And I think we're doing a pretty good job, uh, but this will now give us an official guide to move those resources where they need to go as far as Parks and Recreation planning moving forward.
So in other words, this will take our planning at a, at a higher level?
Yes.
And there will be a full public presentation on it, I wonder if it was complete.
And also in terms, in terms of, uh, engagement, um, I'm as- I'm assuming that there's going to be engagement with stakeholders, uh, the council and especially the residents. Because we want to know what, what do they want out of this, uh, park master plan? Um, I read the, um, resume or the package from the, the consultant and it's quite impressive. I've seen that you've done similar project in Menifee, um, Montebello, Ontario, Placentia. So how, how does this, how do you envision Bellflower compared to those, to those cities?
In terms of the process?
In terms of the pro- in terms of the process, in terms of the, um, environment, how do we compare with them? Because for example, let's say, I think, uh, Montebello was quite expensive, right?
Budget-wise, not.
Budget-wise?
Budget-wise, not that much.
Oh, really? I thought it was very expensive.
Maybe, maybe, I think it was like in the 250 or something like that.
That's almost double, anyway.
Yeah, this one is around, uh.
170?
170, yeah, 77. Yeah, that one included some, uh, some park concept design. So that's where some of the extra budget came in.
Oh, I see, I see.
We're not doing any park concept designs.
Okay, okay.
Like, like PJ mentioned, we're really looking at a high level planning, looking at the programming, looking at maybe some infill projects based on what we hear from the community and some of the trends out there that are recreation. Where can we maybe utilize some vacant areas in some parks to, to really meet the needs that the residents and, and the stakeholders are looking for to enhance kind of the park, the park experience here in Bellflower?
So what kind of, um, information would you be needing from our residents?
Uh, really is what, what are they interested in? What, what are the recreational, um, aspects are they interested in? What we're seeing a lo- across California in the park master plans we're working on is pickleball. Pickleball is one of the fastest growing sports, um, in, in the United States, really. I mean, there's tournaments now.
And a lot of, a lot of the tennis courts are being converted.
Yeah, exactly. And that's what we're seeing like in Menifee, they're, they're retrofitting a lot of their tennis courts and they're re-striping it for pickleball in order to meet that, that growing need for pickleball. So those are the types of things we'll be needing from the residents. We want to know what are the programs? Is, is there aquatic sports? Are there tennis? Is it pickleballs, a basketballs, a baseballs, softball? What are the, what are the sports that they want, they want to see? What are some of the programs, like dancing, arts, crafts, children's programs? What are those types of other programs that they want to see as well? So getting out that information, we, we do, I think we're doing, uh, if I recall, five neighborhood meetings, so we are reaching out to the community, um, throughout, uh, Bellflower to really hone in on what each, because each, each community is probably going to have different, what different needs.
Sure.
And so we're also going to want to know what those needs are and where we can actually fit those needs and which programs can fit in whatever park and amenity. So we're going to be looking at also access. So where, um, the, where the population density is and where, uh, park access can be made, where are you deficient in park access? That's one of, going to be one of our main things is like PJ was mentioning, Langa acquisition. Where are other areas within the city? Could we maybe do a pocket park, those types of things to really fill the need and throughout, throughout the city? So it will be a pretty comprehensive, uh, community master plan. And one of the first steps we need to do when we start this master plan is develop a community engagement plan. Um, so we'll be working with the, with city staff on what are, what's worked in the past, what hasn't worked in the past in terms of getting, um, the word out for this project so we can get as many people as we can, um, to attend, uh, the workshops.
Are you planning on conducting this, um, um, study sessions in different areas of the city?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And what is your timeline for this?
Uh, I think we're about a year.
A year?
Yeah, it's typically about a year for, for the completion of a, a plan like this.
Okay, uh, very good. I forgot, you're Mr. Joe Punzalan?
Punzalan, yes.
For the sake of the, uh, city clerk, Mr. Joe Punzalan. Any question of Mr. Punzalan or?
No, it's exciting, very first time we've done this.
And we've been here before. We've, we completed the city's active transportation plan as well many years ago, so we've got some experience.
Okay, Councilmember Denton?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, that's why I pulled the item. I could have read it, but I want to share this exciting news to our residents.
It's gonna be fun.
Uh, I'm looking forward to your end product. All right? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll move the consent calendar, mayor.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Denton, uh, seconded by Councilmember Coops to approve the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Santanias?
Aye. All right, down to the last item, council reports. Um, Councilmember Denton?
I just wish everybody in Bellflower a wonderful, safe Fourth of July and no loud banging.
No illegal fireworks.
Yeah, that too.
Councilmember Coops?
Yes, I want to thank Priscilla Brown and her husband for being here. If I had to live next to this, I wouldn't be happy either. And, uh, we'll shine a light on this and I'll take personal responsibility to make sure that we don't forget about it, okay? And so if ever you come back in here, you can look me in the eye and say, "Dan, what happened?", okay? All right. I know you will. And, and I've come out the better end on honesty with you before, so I know you'll trust it. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I just want to share a lot of, um, good information about, um, around the city. On June 15th, we had the grand opening of the Wood, uh, Wood Spring Suites. That's our first hotel in City of Bellflower. It's located on, um, Artisia Boulevard, just west of Lakewood. Uh, also the following day, June 16th, um, we do grand opening of Roca Grill and, um, Also, the following day, June 16, with the grand opening of Roca Grill and Whiskey Bar. It's a new place in Bellflower, used to be the old Korean barbecue, but the service, the food is really fantastic. Also, June 17, I attended the Interfaith Prayer Breakfast hosted by Congresswoman Barragan. And I was, I was very pleased that our own, very own pastor, Edie Gardley, was there to lead the prayer. And June 22, we had this wonderful street fest, I talked to a lot of people, and they were very pleased. Thank you so much to our Parks and Rec staff for bringing in this band. From what I gathered, I took an informal survey, the people loved the band. And finally, last Saturday, we had our community walk along the walking trail. It was well-attended, over 50 residents attended, including Councilmember Coops and Councilmember Sanchez. And also, I was very surprised that Assembly Speaker Anthony Randon joined us in this walk. So, it was great, and we felt safe. Thank you so much to our public safety staff for keeping us safe, they blocked the, they blocked Woodruff and Flower as we were crossing. And also, our public work staff for cleaning up the trail as usual. And most importantly, Parks and Rec staff for getting all this preparation, they were on the spot, we have draffles for all the attendees, and they walk away well-exercised, I would say, and they got some prizes too. So, with that, we are adjourning this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at 5:30 PM on Monday, July 10, 2023. This meeting is now adjourned.